Could we do a roll call?
Donahue.
Here.
McKnight. McKnight.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Sterns.
Here.
Could we do the notice for the Board of Health meeting, Katie?
The Board of Health organizational meeting was advertised in the Meadville Tribune on December 31st, 2020.
Have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Go right to the appointment?
Sean, can we do a roll call for the minutes real quick?
Okay, that's, I forgot, I knew there was something. Can we do a roll call for the minutes?
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Now for the appointments?
I nominate Sean Donahue as president.
I'll second that motion.
Anyone want to speak about it or anything? Comments? Can we have a, uh, roll call then?
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Okay, now for Vice President, uh, could I nominate Autumn Vogel?
I second that.
Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
And now could we have a presentation as Gary, are you there? I didn't see your name on there, I'm assuming you are.
Yeah, I'm here.
Uh, can we have your presentation then?
Sure. You'll all see there before you got in the packet and you'll see on the display now, uh, the Board of Health, uh, reported the health officer. COVID, of course, impacted just about everything this year and the, um, property maintenance enforcement was no different. Uh, you'll see in the top there where it reflects what I actually personally did as health officer under the property maintenance code. Um, you'll see in there, you'll see 11 refuse ordinance notices and 24 property maintenance code notices, as well as 10 citations under the property maintenance code. Um, that was primarily done, uh, during these six to eight weeks that we actually had suspended property maintenance enforcement in general and furloughed our two part-time inspectors, so I took over for that time. And then you'll see down below where it also impacted us, you see the under blight-related property maintenance code activity, you'll see the total notices sent down about, uh, just over about 20% over 19. And you'll see, uh, citations and fines assessed down significantly as well, and that can be attributed to COVID directly. I just wanted to point those, those items out and how it was impacted, how property maintenance was impacted in the last year due to COVID primarily. One other change I wanted to point out on the, on the report is under the rooming house and bed and breakfast licensing, there was, there was one fewer bed and breakfast in 2020 as Beth Haven Inn had closed. So we did not renew that 421. And that's pretty much all I have as far as reviewing the report itself unless anyone on the board has any questions.
Gary, I'm just hoping for, for our sake and the sake of the public, just very distinctly, can you just like, um, explain the scope of the Board of Health?
Yes, historically, the Board of Health back at when it was founded back in the early 1900s frankly, really had, was more a broader, more encompassing role back in the day, went from everything from plumbing and building codes, uh, to housing codes to essentially they would have had the authority actually to quarantine during a pandemic, which would have been interesting to try to implement now. Nowadays, it's really was restricted in the past, um, I don't know, 10 to 20 years, it had been more with restaurant licensing and enforcement. And we had dropped that, uh, several years ago, turned that over to the state just due to staffing issues. And now it's really, it really has to do most with licensing of plumbers, licensing of bed and breakfast and rooming houses, really more of a housing focus, when it comes to Board of Health activities now.
Thank you, Gary, and can you just, um, uh, is that, um, is that some, are those priorities that we've set, or is that just come because of the way that things go, have gone at the state? And the way other elements of, of what the Board of Health might have done has been taken care of?
It's a little bit of both. Um, over the last century, of course, state has assumed more and more responsibility for actual health, uh, when it comes to disease and, and communicable disease issues that might have come into play. The, the plumbing and the plumber licensing, of course, is stayed with the Board of Health. Um, but the decision to drop the, uh, restaurant, uh, food inspections was, was made by the city, uh, just essentially due to staffing issues. So that, that one was a city, city action, but the rest had mainly to do with how the state has evolved and how they handle health issues.
Any other questions? Comments? I'd just like to say I'm sorry to see that Beth Haven Inn had closed. Anybody close up, especially this year, but I guess it would be the year anybody would.
Question, um, Gary, do you, uh, does the Board of Health or who, is it parking or who enforces, um, where people park? If they can park in their yards or, um, is that your department, what department is that?
You mean, I assume you mean off-street parking when it comes to private residences and businesses?
Correct.
Yeah, that would be under zoning.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no more questions, uh, I'd like to move on to old business. I don't believe there's any.
I have no business.
I don't believe there's any new business either.
That's correct.
Could I have a motion adjourned to our regular meeting shortly?
I motion we adjourn to our regular meeting?
So moved, second.
Could I have a roll call?
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Back to you Leroy.
Appreciate it. Uh, before we can start the meeting, um, if you have your phone on, if you could mute it, uh, if you're not speaking, that'd be helpful. Uh, there's quite a bit of feedback coming and I'm not sure where it's coming from. So we'll try to remind you to, uh, to unmute your phone. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order, roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Uh, pledge of allegiance, Andy, do we have a flag we can throw up there by chance?
Oh, uh, if I remember correctly. Uh, you better go without it because I've forgotten, I don't know where I saved the image. I'm sorry.
Not a problem. Not a problem. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, public comments, Katie, do we have, uh, any public comments?
Your Honor, I did not receive any public comment ahead of tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Uh, Andy, if you could give us a COVID-19, uh, disaster emergency update, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, thanks, Your Honor, I'll just, again, just the, uh, bi-weekly reminder when we meet that we continue to operate under a declaration of disaster emergency until further action by council. Um, and don't necessarily have anything new in terms of new policies or protocols here related to the city at this point. I just will remind citizens that there is a public testing event at the Crawford County Fairgrounds this week through Friday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Uh, and encourage, uh, citizens to participate that, certainly if they're experiencing any symptoms as well. And I will note that our own staff, frontline staff, police and firemen, uh, were offered the vaccine, um, and will be here due for their booster early next week.
Any questions for Andy? Thank you. Any questions for Andy?
Nope.
No.
Not hearing any. Uh, notice of executive sessions, Katie?
Uh, Your Honor, there was no executive session held at your last meeting in December.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, approval of minutes for December 16th?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Thank you. Any questions to discussion? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Uh, Katie, do we have any other communication?
No, Your Honor, I have not received, I have not received any communication.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Uh, Andy, if you'd like to go ahead and do your manager's report?
Uh, sorry, Your Honor, before I, um, the only thing I want to touch base on is sort of following up from our, from the presentation that was done at the 1216 meeting, uh, by the Pennsylvania Economy League, um, who presented a number, a big, an overview, right, of the, um, draft strategic management planning program report. Uh, I wanted to give council the opportunity, if they, if you had an opportunity to digest or begin to digest it, there was a lot there. Um, so it'll be an opportunity for this evening for council members to raise any questions, concerns. Before I do that, however, let me just go into, um, some quick, other quick updates. Um, so with respect to Christmas tree pickup, I, though we've issued a press release and we placed a notice on our Facebook page, there will not be the annual Crawford Area Young Chamber of Commerce Christmas tree pickup event this year. Uh, and so citizens should place their Christmas tree, if they have one, at the curb with their refuse, on their regular refuse night, uh, to be picked up by Tri-County, um, our waste hauler, and that is through January 20th. So, uh, we encourage citizens to, to do that again on your refuse night, please place your tree out, if it's a large tree, it should be sectioned. Um, if it's taller than six feet or wider than four feet, it should be cut up into pieces. Um, and I also encourage them not to be alarmed if it doesn't go with your, with your garbage, that it may be a separate pickup on that day with a separate truck on that route by Tri-County. And then Gary Johnson, would you, um, would you brief the council just as we, we've been trying to remember to brief council briefly on the zoning hearing coming, forthcoming in the month and the code, and this is the month the Code Appeals Board is meeting. Gary, would you touch upon the dates in a brief summary of those? Uh, sure, the, um, zoning hearing board, uh, is going to be meeting on the 21st of January to hear a special exception appeal, uh, for Hastings, which is the owner of the new Dollar Tree Plaza. Um, they propose to, uh, house a, an adult daycare, essentially is what it is, run by Life Northwest Pennsylvania, they're currently stationed at the Grove Street Hospital. The project would contemplate, uh, use of all of the existing vacant space north of that new Kindred Hospice office in there, um, as well as a small addition to the east toward Cottage Street for a total square footage of about 10,500 square feet. Um, that would accommodate, uh, mainly office space and open area for the adult daycare activities. Um, that is permitted as a special exception, which is allowed subject to certain conditions. Um, that'll go before the board again on the 21st of January. That's the, it for the zoning hearing. Um, the Code Appeal is actually in a, in a variance request from Voodoo Brewery for their, uh, operation over on Bessemer Street. Um, they had had a, what was a retail space selling, uh, selling beer on a retail basis in a space over in the main building. And in a follow-up, uh, uh, inspection, it was, it was found that it was actually being used as essentially as a, as a bar or a tavern, if you will. That change from the retail to the tavern necessitated, it was basically, it's called a change of occupancy, which triggers certain code requirements, including fire suppression or sprinkling. Uh, Voodoo is seeking a variance from that requirement to sprinkle the building, uh, based on other compensatory action and circumstances such as additional fire extinguishers, fire detection, the lack of combustibles in the building, et cetera. Uh, that hearing, um, is, it's a very similar request, uh, to what the, uh, French, the former Jack's Pharmacy, the current, uh, now it's the coffee shop, their request from last year, it's a very similar request. That hearing is going to be on January 22nd at 2:00 PM, and that will actually be at the Voodoo facility for, um, ease of Code Appeal, board members to understand how it's currently being used. And that would again be a Code Appeal as opposed to a zoning ordinance appeal. That's all I had. Thank you, Gary. Uh, and then council, I'm going to go then, unless there's any questions on either of those, I'll move to the Pennsylvania Economy League report. Okay. Councilman Roa, I know you had shared, um, being I've ordered the council, um, some general sort of overall comments about some data. Um, I don't know, do you want, do you wish to review those now with council?
Well, um, if it's all right with the rest of council, yes. I've been going through the report. I took just one department because it's the only one I could find that they actually did some calculations of this type. And I recast, uh, first of all, I updated population, some of the populations they used in the report were 10 years old. Census dot com slash quick facts has, uh, projections through 19 or 2019. So where appropriate, I, uh, inserted those. There are notes, color coding, uh, what was inserted, what's original, uh, and so on and so forth. Basically, the metric that I used was, I compared expenditures for this particular department as a percentage of median household income, which puts a little different cast on it. Uh, I questioned, I questioned some of the, uh, choices that they made for cities, for example, Coatesville is a suburb of Philadelphia, it's 44 miles away. That's a completely different labor market. New Kensington and Lower Borough are suburbs of Pittsburgh, again, a completely different and arguably higher market. What we don't know, uh, and I've, again, I'm repeating some of what's in my, my notes to you. What we don't know is whether they consider their budget in each city the same way we consider ours. Debbie does a very thorough and professional job of accounting for all costs, like, um, minimum municipal obligations and so forth. Now, some communities might put that under general administration, which is artificially going to depress the, uh, cost of each department and give a different metric. So that's an area of concern. I noted several cities and townships that are third-class cities, and the townships are another story, but they're immediately on either side of us. In Northwest Pennsylvania, here in Mill Creek, I would expect to have higher wage base. But it doesn't hurt to include them as references. But, for example, they included the city of Sharon, but they ignored the city of Hermitage, which is immediately next to Sharon. They did not include the city of Farrell, which is smaller, and in fact, just emerged after 30-some years from Act 47. But that metric would be interesting to know, uh, just going forward. They included Oil City, but did not include Franklin or Titusville, or Corey, or Warren PA, which is about 10,000 people, slightly less. But still close enough in size to us. Uh, I mean, if they used Union Town at 9980, they can certainly use Warren PA at 97 or 9800. So those, those would be my comments. I would like to see some more work done on this, I'd like to see some more thorough analysis so that we know that we are really looking at the same data set. If Butler doesn't, and in fact, I don't know how it could. Um, Oil City has, in this particular case, a very low police expenditure per resident, which makes me suspect that they're not including minimum municipal obligations or, uh, healthcare costs. Uh, and again, that would make all the difference in the world if we are trying to achieve a certain goal. I don't know if anybody, I, I worked on this most of the day, so you probably didn't have much of a chance to, to look it over. If you have any questions, I'll, I'll try to answer them off the cuff, though. I'm really looking for a policy decision of council, whether they want more data, more cities, uh, a more complete analysis so that we know what we're looking at.
Well, Jim, I appreciate you, uh, putting this chart together and sharing with council. I didn't get it until late in the day, so I have not had a real opportunity to go through it, but I appreciate you doing it. Um, one thing I do want to say, um, I want to make sure that we clarify, you know, the, the Pennsylvania Economy League has given us ideas of what we need to, to possibly look at, but, uh, they're in a draft form. Um, I was really taken back by the article in the Tribune this morning, uh, with Westmead Township, because we, as a council, have not approved this in any way, shape or form, we have not even had the time to really go through it and take a look at it. I, I just think we need to be careful we don't get the cart before the horse, um, like it was in the paper today. We haven't made any decision as a council as whole on any of the, the ideas or, uh, uh, presentations that they gave us, I just want to make sure we're clear on that. Does anybody else have any, any other comments?
Good point. I agree with you.
Uh, thanks, Jim. Anybody else have any comments that they'd like to make?
Um, Gary Johnson, you reached out, um, some point today, um, to the Pennsylvania Economy League. Um, can you share what, the information in terms of, of where they got this, uh, where, how they, where they got the data for certain sections of the report? As, as far as the budgets, uh, budgets are concerned, individual budgets of departments, they pulled those from standard DCD reports. Uh, they didn't communicate directly with those cities to get, to break down any further information, they can do that, they, they indicated to me they can do that, could drill down some more to get some information. Um, if we were to do that, I'd suggest we try to narrow and specify which ones we would want to see. Um, because it takes a considerable amount of time and effort to, to gather that information, um, when you try to look at it from an apples-to-apples standpoint. Um, but that's where they got it, from the standard state reports, uh, from DCED. And Jim, I suppose if you were to answer that question in terms of narrowing it down, um, you would probably focus on the, the, um, communities that were in red in your, um, analysis, right? Corey, Erie, Franklin, Hermitage, Newcastle, Titusville, Warren.
Yeah, I mean, Newcastle is a little less important because, again, in fact, I think it was in Act 47 at one point. But I mean, it's getting down toward the Pittsburgh area, it's not quite a suburb of Pittsburgh. Just like it wouldn't be, uh, absolutely essential to get Erie or Mill Creek. I think our neighboring townships, because that is arguably the same labor pool, uh, I think our neighboring townships would be good information to have because we, again, we see how we stack up in terms of our owner occupied home value and median household income, uh, as well as in what we, uh, expend as a percentage of median income. That was just, that was just a, a metric that I developed because it does have, it does go towards showing tax, tax burden. Um, I mean, if they wanted to do something like that, that's fine. On, on the other hand, uh, if you want to eliminate personally, New Kensington, Lower Borough, Borough and Washington and Coatesville, that probably would not be objectionable because, again, they are so far away. Completely different labor markets and everything else. And, uh, I would expect completely different median home values as well as median household income.
Okay, well, I'll engage the Pennsylvania Economy League in some of this discussion, yeah?
Okay, I mean, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of report to go through. It also was curious that, unless I'm missing something, they only did this kind of analysis for one department. They, I don't believe they did it for fire or public works, which I found interesting. Uh, again, I'd like it to be consistent personally. If you're going to, if you're going to have this for, for one department, I think we ought to have it for each and every one.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too.
This level of analysis was probably a result of my probing further in the draft phase to, that I was requesting benchmark, right? Benchmark ourselves against other relevant communities.
Right.
Um, and I, I probably focused on the police initially. But anyhow, uh, we can, we can have that discussion with respect to the other departments as well.
Okay. If no one else has any other questions, I'll let the meeting progress.
Hearing no other questions. Andy, you want to go ahead and go with your, is there more in the manager's report?
No, Your Honor, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions for Andy on the manager's report? Hearing none, we'll go into old business. Uh, we have a third and final reading of an ordinance for amending the city employee's retirement, Katie?
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 165 of the Meadville Municipal Code, City Employees Retirement and Pension Fund, to add Section 165.21, to add provisions establishing a retirement window for certain long-serving employees.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
Discussion, Andy, you want to?
Yep, uh, so just by way of reminder, we, because we did first and second reading of this ordinance back on 1216. Uh, so this is a potential retirement incentive. Um, it's a, it's a window, um, as described here, where eligible employees who meet certain years of service and age requirements, uh, would be eligible to receive a small financial incentive. Essentially, a $200 a month for 12 months incentive, uh, to retire, uh, during the window. So it's just a potential cost savings measure if, um, if the eligible employees would, uh, take advantage of it.
Okay. Any questions for Andy or any questions or comments? Hearing none, uh, roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Um, we be, uh, we have B, discussion, council's priorities for 2021. When we were going through our budget time, um, before Christmas, we had a list of things that council had in.
that council had an interest in, um, for the year two, uh, twenty twenty-one. And, uh, want to start the, the year off with the first meeting to try to, you know, um, first of all, get each council member's input on what priorities they'd like to see, what is going to be a short term or what we could call long term. Um, so with that, I want to make sure every council member has, uh, an opportunity. Sean, I'll, I'll start with you. Do you have ideas for the priorities for two thousand twenty-one?
Uh, okay, well, first of all, I'd like, I'd just like to say that we're still in a disaster zone and, uh, vaccines are coming, but it's slow, and I think that things aren't really going to pick up before July. Okay, so I just would like to think that, uh, we should be real selective of what we want to make the staff get involved in because of the times involved in this and how much time they have and how much time they spend on disasters, on the disaster area of it. Uh, something I think you just gotta really, we should start in the next few weeks even, is the third-party billing. If you get those people back in here, I know that they had said they could do a ninety-day trial and you don't have to sign on for a year. I know that, uh, the mayor had some, he was cautious about it, and I think it's something we should try as soon as possible. And, uh, I know I can get some fire departments around the area to let us know what they collect in third-party billing. Uh, I just, uh, I had some comments for, uh, some of the things that Autumn had presented that we have a printout on. Uh, the dispatch, that's something we really have to look at, and sooner the better. Uh, it's going to take months to organize that, and the police, the police officers have to be involved in it, definitely. It's not something we can just enforce. And, uh, I was just looking, it was in two thousand sixteen, so it's been four years since we looked at this. It was May, was when we voted it down last time. Uh, just, I, I'm interested to see what else anyone else can come up with. I have, uh, I've been talking to Andy about it. I don't know if he talked to anyone else, was, uh, I'm interested in, uh, enforcing for, uh, video games in the city. We have a tax that's already available, and it's something we should probably be enforcing and collect a little money. It's about-
With that, but Sean, can you kind of specify the video? Are, are you talking the-
Pennsylvania game of skill. The Pennsylvania game of skills. I'm, I'm interested in, uh, I know that they, they had a tax on video games back in the eighties, and, uh, when they first came out, and I, the, the Pennsylvania game of skills have overtaken every building you go into nowadays. Anything's public, you'll find one. And, uh, maybe we should be looking towards some kind of, uh, a fee.
Isn't there still in the-
Yes.
Is there?
Andy? Andy?
No, this is Larry. I have a question. Do we still have an amusement tax? I know we had one before. Is that still in, in effect or not?
No, what we have is, what Councilman Donahue is referring to is, is a, is a tax on mechanical amusement devices, which are, which are defined in our ordinance. Um, so to be clear for the public, we're not talking about your Xbox or your Wii or your Switch, Nintendo Switch in your basement and your kid playing video games. We're talking about commercially available as defined, um, the, uh, what, what are defined as mechanical amusement devices. Um, so it's not an amusement tax per se, it's specific to a device that has to be licensed and, and certified by the city clerk's office. It's been some time, I mean, just looking quickly, actually, I think there's some figures in the stamp report. Um, we've received very little revenue, and I'll be honest with you, at one point, we were spending more in staff time trying to collect the revenue than we were in, in, in the actual revenue, and so it was a choice to, to focus our limited time and resources elsewhere. But to Councilman Donahue's point, it seems that there's, there's a proliferation of them, um, in the last, you know, one, two, three years particularly. Uh, and I think it is something that we ought to look at again and see what revenue we might be missing. Um, and just this week, I'd asked Elizabeth Satafor to begin to do research to ensure that, um, to review the authority under the tax, the Act five-eleven, the Tax Enabling Act, to review our definition of a mechanical amusement device, um, as it relates to these devices that we're seeing crop up. So we're still doing that research and can come back to council. Uh, but essentially, if, if those devices meet our definition of a mechanical amusement device and we're confident that, um, you know, it's still taxable under Act five-eleven, then we already have that ordinance on the books and we can proceed to attempt to collect revenue. There, there shouldn't be an action by council unless at some point you want to revisit the actual fee, which I don't know off the top of my head, don't have in front of me, but I can share for the next meeting.
Sean, did you have some other ideas?
Uh, no, but that, those are the things I'd like to see us get on as, as soon as possible, and I realize that we, there's only so much time to do things. So, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Um, Jim, I'll go ahead and start with you. Do you have, uh, some comments?
Well, Autumn has, uh, several things in, in order to, uh, avoid repeating them, the mutual aid, uh, reassessment, third-party billing, dispatch. But we have two projects that we really need to concentrate on. One is obviously the Strategic Management Planning Proposal, uh, that's going to require a lot of study on the part of council, and, uh, we need new zoning ordinance. We've had a draft coming our way, but our present zoning has outlived its life, and some of it actually retards development. We have a special hearing coming, and for the life of me, I don't understand why it's needed, but the fact that it's needed tells me that our old zoning ordinance has outlived its useful life. A few months ago, we lost a potential business, uh, in the downtown area, uh, and again, it needed a, a, uh, special exception hearing. Whether that was the cause that the business did not locate there or not, I'm unaware of that. But on the off-chance that it was, again, we need to be looking carefully at a new zoning We can't afford to lose development, especially taxable properties that employ people, people pay local service tax, they patronize businesses, and they perform a needed service in the community. Now, we have a new zoning ordinance coming our way, but trust me from past experience, this is not a document you just look at and pass. The last time, twenty-five years ago, when they, so when they did a document like this, we had to study the entire thing because the people who drew up the document, that being the consultants, made a lot of errors, and we had to change, uh, one entire district's zoning completely. So we need to be certain that the zoning ordinance that we adopt, and we have studied it thoroughly, understand it completely, and we're, are ready to make the changes that may need to be made. So, uh, with that in mind, that, those are my two top priorities, Strategic Management Planning Program and implementing the recommendations and doing the zoning ordinance the right way.
Jim, this is Andy.
Yes.
Specific to the Strategic Management Plan Recommendations, right? There's about fifty in there. Are there particular ones that you wish to focus on or?
Um, I haven't, I haven't gotten through all fifty of them. Uh, some of them, because remember, uh, I asked for and received sample work product from each of our contenders. Uh, for example, they did Warren PA, which is why I'm surprised it didn't include Warren in our study. Um, but they're a boilerplate. If you look at page fifty-seven of Warren's, it might be the same recommendation they make on page sixty-three of Meadville's. So there's some boilerplate in there. I guess that's going to require a little bit more study. After all, it's like a hundred-some-page document, and there's a lot of facts in it. Um, but I'll, I'll try to, uh, at least make some suggestions for everybody's consideration. But thank you for asking.
Autumn, I will go ahead and go with you. You, uh, you presented a list with council, I appreciate that, and I'm just going to give you the opportunity to discuss it.
Sure, sure. Thanks, uh, thanks, Mayor. I, um, tried to assemble my priorities in a way that was coherent, uh, and, and share them with council ahead of time. Um, uh, and, uh, for the benefit of, of the public and folks that don't have this list in front of them, um, it, I tried to break down what priorities I think could happen in the first six months of twenty twenty-one and, and what we could look for, look at in the second six months of twenty twenty-one. Early twenty twenty-one priorities being, um, exploring the option for revenue sharing with Meadville, uh, Meadville Area Ambulance Service, um, if appropriate. It would be great if that recommendation could come from the fire department. Upgrading software for city, uh, administration and, and public works. I can only imagine how much of a load, uh, I, I imagine that, uh, the research and shift would take a lot from staff, but I imagine that it would take a lot of weight off, um, to, to make that shift. Um, uh, I'd love to hear a recommendation regarding the limited use of the holding cell. Uh, again, ideally, that would come from the police department if that's appropriate, uh, and they've got the bandwidth to take that on. Um, I think we do need to move on, on countywide reassessments, uh, and I think that it's important that we do so in partnership with other municipalities in the county, um, that would similarly benefit from a reassessment, like Titusville. Um, uh, I would like us to explore, um, options for contracts for service, um, for fee-for-service programs, um, in administering mutual aid, uh, to surrounding municipalities. Um, and, uh, and I'd like to, uh, us to establish a planning committee for the renovation of Heidi Cooper Park. Um, I guess I will back up to say I, uh, we, we've got priorities in terms of, um, uh, in terms of finances, but right, also programmatic priorities, and, and I don't think that they can be divorced from one another. So many of these come from the, uh, stamp program recommendations, but some of them are work that I are, I know is already happening, uh, at the city level, so I was just trying to incorporate what, um, was on my mind. Uh, so that's the first six months of a busy twenty twenty-one, uh, and I, what I think could happen in the second six months, potentially, um, is implementing third-party billing, as Sean mentioned. Um, uh, trying to get a recommendation, again, if appropriate, from the fire department regarding excessive overtime use, um, part-time firefighters, um, uh, changes that would allow firefighters to, to drive, to, uh, drive fireworks, um, and, and what it would mean for them to recruit volunteers. Um, uh, I'd like to see us move on, um, creating an environmental advisory council, which was in the Miamiville Action Plan and has been, um, kind of put off for a while. Uh, I'd like to see us move, uh, nine-one-one dispatch, uh, to Crawford County by the kind of second half of the year. Um, uh, hold-up police department town hall, which is already happening in conjunction with the, uh, effort that the city is, uh, undergoing with NAACP. Uh, and I'd like to see, to, I'd like to see us begin the process, uh, for home rule charter, um, if, you know, after a period of, of researching and some presentations to council, uh, if we think that that's, um, uh, a route we want to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Autumn. Larry?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I'm in agreement with, um, some of the things that Autumn said, as well as Jim and Sean. Um, I, I'd like to see us do some revenue sharing, uh, with the ambulance service, um, update, uh, software, um, uh, definitely a public reassessment, um, and, uh, like Sean said, contracts for, uh, uh, companies to do third-party billing. And I'm also interested in, in finding out and planning, uh, what to do with Heidi Cooper Park. Um, I think, I think we need to look into, uh, something to do with a volunteer or, or to help out our fire department. Um, maybe that's a way we could, uh, alleviate costs if, um, we have volunteers, uh, work alongside our, our department and be trained. Also, look at our nine-one-one dispatch. Um, I, I think that's something we need to consider is, uh, moving that, uh, trying to save, uh, money that way. Um, I'm also interested in looking at some of the expenditures, um, that we've made, um, with the city and streets department, um, and some that, and see what we have planned, um, and really assess, uh, some of the ones that our city's planning to pay. Is it something that we could afford to hold off on? And are we spending money, uh, coal-patching streets and, and, and things, uh, every year? Are these things that need, should be looked at as a way of saving money? Uh, because I, I, there's a couple I can, uh, think of that every year, if not twice a year, uh, they're, they're spending money coal-patching them. Um, and it just, to, to me, I, I don't understand, uh, the logic behind if you're continually, continually repairing something, fix it once and it'll last, uh, uh, longer. Um, maybe that's something I need to, to speak with the streets department about, find out, uh, the reasoning behind doing it this way. But, uh, yeah, I agree with a lot of, uh, with what Autumn said, Sean and, and Jim. Everybody has some good ideas. I think what we need to do again is sit down, um, and have everything, everyone's ideas on paper, and then we all come together to an agreement, what is, what we should tackle first as council, as opposed to, you know, everybody having their own certain group. We need to put together one complete group. And that's all, Your Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm going to be the bearer of bad news. Um, we're in January, and I'm projecting, from the numbers that I've seen last year and possibly the, the increase, now, these are only estimates, that we're going to be around six hundred thousand, if not maybe a little more, out of balance by the end of this year for two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah.
Um, my immediate concerns are to try to, uh, uh, control that, um, and not waiting until the end of the year to making tough decisions. So one of the things that I'd like to see is that we have a piece of property sitting down on Water Street that has sat empty now. Uh, I'd like to see us moving on either leasing it or renting it or selling it, one of the three. Then, um, we're paying taxes on it, even though it was reassessed, but that building should not be sitting empty. So that would be one of my priorities. Um, we talked about the third-part billing, and I was not in favor of it four years ago. I'm not, I'm, I'm willing to take another look at it. The numbers may have changed, things may have looked a little bit different now. Um, and I'm also interested in the nine-one-one. But my concern is that we need to focus, I would like to see us focus on, how are we going to fill that deficit, um, in, in the next, uh, eleven months or ten months? So that would be one of the things that I would like to look at. When we talk about reassessment, um, over the holiday, I have, uh, spent a lot of time talking to Commissioner Eric Henry. And what I'm going to propose, and I want you to think about, is that we talked about reassessment. Now, we know that reassessment's not going to happen in two thousand twenty or possibly two thousand, or, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two. But in the conversations that I had with Commissioner Henry, um, I suggest that we get together, either in a public meeting, um, either the county can host it, the city can host it, we can do it jointly, and, and I'm going to give you a couple of different versions, um, and sit down and start educating and understanding the reassessment and what it needs to do, how do we get, go about doing it. I, I, I feel that if we sit down and openly discuss this and, and we get educated on it, we'll make better, better decisions in the future. Now, with that being said, Commissioner Henry kind of left it up to me to bring to council on how do we want to handle that? Do we want to have that public meeting? Um, and if we do, I've asked Elizabeth to give us some input when I'm finished. Or do we appoint two people from council to meet with the commissioners? Um, I think the more information that we get, the better decisions that we're going to be making. So that's kind of something I'm throwing at you now, that I'd like to get moving on it, because if we decide to do a public meeting, an open, transparent, public meeting, um, and all council members are going to be there, and the- and all council members are going to be there, and the commissioners, you know, they may have individuals from maybe the Farm Bureau, other municipalities that would like to learn. Or, again, we can go back to where we have an appointment of two people from council. So can I kind of get a feel from council members on how you feel about that?
Leroy, I would like to have it, and I think it would be great if it was open to public. You know, the more knowledge the public has, and myself included, we all can make a better decision and have an understanding of exactly why we're asking for an assessment and the purpose and the outcome of the assessment, how, the pros and cons. So, you know, I think it's wise to offer to all the council and to the public.
And Larry, before you say anything, you know what? I'd really like to get our solicitor to give us some input before we get too far into discussion with that, if that would be okay with council.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Elizabeth, you're there. We've had this discussion about a week ago. Could you share with us your input, please?
Yes, Your Honor. I think that as long as council can come to a consensus, then I can help you shape this meeting. But obviously, you know, if you're going to pick just two representatives to sit down with Mr. Henry, as you have informally in the past, Mr. Mayor, then we don't need to be concerned with Sunshine Act, provided that the substance of the meeting is just for information gathering. There won't be any deliberations. There won't be any decision-making there. If you're just gathering information from one of the commissioners, then this is not a public meeting type of scenario. However, if you're going to delegate some representatives from council and meet with all three commissioners, then you've got the majority of the commissioners, you've got the totality of the commissioners participating. And in that case, we're going to want to be fully, we're going to want to advertise and make that meeting available for public observation and participation. But so either we want to go collectively, we can work to make that happen in compliance with the act.
Elizabeth, a real quick question. If we decide to do this publicly, you know, opening it up to the public, does it have to be, does a county advertise it? Does it get advertised by the city? What would your thought be?
Well, I think that, Your Honor, that's going to be a matter of who's calling the meeting, right? So if the city is interested in pursuing the reassessment and the city is reaching out to the commissioners, requesting the commissioners' participation in a meeting, then that's a city-initiated meeting that would be, you know, part of our agenda. We would need to be advertising it.
Okay. Sean, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're finally right. I agree with Larry, but at the same time, I would really like it to be a big public meeting, but I don't think we're going to be having public meetings for months. I think it's going to be March or April before we're all sitting in the same room again. And I'd rather see us move ahead quicker than that, or at least you could start by having a meeting with two council members and Eric Henry, and then maybe we could do a public meeting when the world opens back up. And I really think it's going to be like July before everything, people are calmed down again. So, yeah, I just, I've watched what happened in England just now, and I think a year ago that they were just shutting down a year ago in England in February, and then we shut down a month later. So, that's all.
I understand what you're saying, Sean. One thing that we could use, we do it with other boards that I stood on. We can do a Zoom meeting where the community can listen in. We've had like 30, 40 members at one time on a Zoom. So that option could still be there, and I understand what you're saying. So that's one of the details we'd have to work out.
I'm like Larry. I'd like to hear more about it myself. I don't understand it completely, just like the public. So, I mean, I'd like to hear more. I really need to have more input from someone that really understands everything about it.
Okay. Autumn, any comments?
Yeah, thank you. I will just, I don't, I think you all know I love a good public meeting. I don't know if this is, like, I'm not sure what exactly we would get out of this public meeting, what the action coming out of it would be. And I don't know that a public meeting around reassessment held by the county would necessarily be held or educational in the same way that it would be for the city, right? We know through our experience and we know through our data that a countywide reassessment would benefit the majority of the residents of the city of Meville, and that's who we represent. I, right, the county's got, you know, they've got a broader constituency. And I imagine that they're going to present other sides to an assessment, but we know that an assessment isn't the best interest of most of our residents. And so, you know, I would certainly want any kind of public meeting or an educational meeting that the city's part of to express that. I guess I would maybe be interested if Jill Galbo or someone from the county's assessment office were to provide the education. That's, to me, I'm glad to hear that the county's amenable, certainly, but I do think that we, that our interest in an assessment is, in a reassessment is clear. And like I mentioned before, it is in line with interests of other municipalities like Titusville, maybe some others in the county that would similarly benefit. And, you know, I'd want to be able to, I would want to make sure that we can make that case and educate our constituents in that way as effectively as possible. I think, and so I don't know what a large public meeting would do in that sense, but sure. I mean, it's always good to educate people. I'm always on the side of public education. That sounds great.
Leroy, there is another option. And that would be, that would be to have each party have, shall we say, a professional negotiator. Now, there might be need for conflict counsel, depending on who you would choose. But to have professionals go back and forth and negotiate and clarify what the issues are, so both parties have better understanding of those issues. That would get us through the COVID-19 lockdowns and would at least allow us to be on track, and then we could consider whether we're going to have full-body meetings or subcommittee meetings or some hybrid in between. Just a thought.
Okay. Well, we do know that, you know, this process isn't going to be done this year. My goal as mayor and for council is to keep us on track, make sure that, you know, we're looking at these as we go down the road. There have been a lot of things that we've talked about today and that Autumn put on the list, and thank you, Autumn, for doing that. And Jim, thank you for getting all the numbers that we need. I just want to make sure that we stay on track. And one of the things that I'm, what I'm looking at with the reassessment is, I'm like Sean, I don't know that much about reassessment. I've had conversations with Mr. Galbo. We talked about the third that's going to change, a third that won't change, and a third will go higher. Now, I mean, that's kind of the rule of thumb that I've been taught. But I just felt that, yes, the city's going to benefit, I hope. But to get educated on it, I don't like making decisions when we don't have, when I'm not comfortable not having the information. And I just want to find a way to get that information so we and the public understands it. So, we can discuss it later on and see if we wanted to go ahead and how we want to proceed from this point. I can say this, I feel a very open relationship with our county commissioners on trying to educate us. And yes, they do represent all the county, but remember this, if Meville fails, the county fails too. You know, I mean, we all have to work together and try to find a solution to some of the issues, in my mind. So, those are some of the priorities that I have. I'm looking more at financial, immediate financial ways to start looking at how we're going to balance that budget. So I guess at this point, where do we go from here? Any suggestions?
Mayor, is the Water Street property, is it on the open market for sale? Has it been listed? Where are we at with it?
Andy, can you bring us up to speed with that?
Where are you at with it? Do you wish to list it for sale? Do you wish to rent it? As I pose that question to council as a body?
I don't necessarily think that an exclusive right-to-sell listing is probably not in our best interest at this point. It may be better to treat it as an open listing, but in any event, we need professional negotiators. This cannot become a political football. I stress the need for professional negotiators. We have a management firm right now. They've agreed to cooperate with other brokers. My understanding is we do not have a listing contract at this point. And I'm not sure with this kind of property that, because commercial brokerage is completely different from residential brokerage. A lot more, a lot stronger client relationships, I think would be fair to say. I was going to bring that up in an executive session, but there are some other considerations that also need to be addressed.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'm sorry, go ahead, Sean.
Andy's looking for us to give him direction on what to do with the city building. What Jim's saying, I agree with Jim. I'm not sure I want to sell it if we're going to give it away, if we sell it too cheap, all right? I don't know that this is a real good market to be selling something like that. I agree with Leroy that we have to do something with this building. It is, it's not going to be profitable like that. It's just bringing us down, so. But what are you thinking, Mayor?
Well, I'm thinking we got a building sitting down that we're paying heating on. There's maintenance has continued that's going. Doing nothing is not helping. I mean, you know, Jim, you're the realtor. What do you think it's worth? I mean, what value do we put on that?
Leroy, that needs to be done in an executive session. There are some considerations there, and I need to explain them to council.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. Did that answer the question, Sean?
Yes, it does.
So, we have that building, so this, you know, these are some of the things that I'm looking at financially right now that I have, you know, concerns about, deep concerns. And, you know, I don't see us going out and buying a new fire truck, and we just had to raise a millage of tax. You know, use grant monies. There's other, hopefully other ways to do it, but I just don't know where the funds are going to come from, and that's my concern. So I don't mean to be bearer of bad news in January, but that's what we got to face.
It's either face it now or face it in November.
Well, I just don't want anybody on council coming back and saying, "Well, we let this go and didn't get on it." We're on it January, first meeting in January, so we're going to continue this. It'll be on the agenda. It'll be a reminder every meeting we have on where we're at and where we're working. So, it brings up another question. You know, do we appoint committees? Do we not? We can discuss it later. We've got to be careful we don't overload the staff. My God, they got enough going on.
Leroy, could we discuss that later? A little, not much later, but a little bit later?
Sure, sure. I'm just trying to give ideas what we're doing January 1.
Yeah, Jim, is there, Jim, is there a point in time that you're looking to wait for?
After tonight, but not much after tonight. I would like to impart some information to council in the executive session. And this was one of the items I would like to impart. It's not for decision-making. It's simply to receive information.
Okay, sure. So after tonight. I still think that, you know, I mean, there are several, listening to all of council list out their priorities, I think there were several overlapping priorities that maybe could give staff direction in the short term to start working on, right? I heard, I heard third-party billing, I heard moving police dispatch from mostly everyone on the call. Also talking about reassessment, which I recognize is a long-term issue, but, right, and I know that, right, just not, those three things aren't going to be the three things that fix the budget for this year, won't be the, won't be the total of our efforts for the year. But at least in what I heard tonight, it sounds like those three things were common, and at least maybe staff could make some movement. I know some movement has been made on those fronts, but could continue to move on that. Is that...
Yes. That's what you're, that's, I agree. That's what I'd like to see done too. Those typically things.
So would I.
Yeah, there are some, there are some things that we can take a real big bite out of and do it fairly quickly.
Yeah, and to me, I think those things are maybe third-party billing and moving dispatch, or at least getting that process started.
Absolutely.
So at least those two things.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody have any other comments? Andy, any comments that you'd like to throw in?
I'll just simply say on third-party billing, Chief Wiley delivered to my office today for a preliminary report data that he and I will go over and will prepare to bring that to council, potentially as soon as your next meeting, if we can pull it off. So that one's in the works anyhow.
Okay.
Well, just back to your reassessment, I mean, that was one of your three, right? I've heard third-party billing, police dispatch, and reassessment. Is there consensus on the reassessment or on how we're approaching that?
Can we wait until after tonight, like immediately after tonight?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Great. Katie, if you would keep a list that would be added to the agenda each week or each meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Just for clarification, Your Honor, am I, will the list be all of the priorities that were discussed by each individual council member tonight? Or is there a consensus of what priorities should stay on the agenda?
What I'm hoping is we'll be able, as each council member, I mean, we kind of know where we're heading with that. So just, you know, having them on the agenda is a reminder. You know, it doesn't always have to be discussed, but it can be on the agenda.
Okay, will do.
Is that helpful?
It is.
Katie, you and I will discuss further.
Got it.
All right.
I guess I do want some clarity. What is the list? Is the list what we, all the things we said? Is the list just those three things we started with? I don't know what the list is.
Well, neither do I. It can be as long as we want it to be.
All right, Katie, you got that? Okay.
How about, how about if at a public meeting, we take each item and get an up or down from council, and if at least three members want it, it'll appear on the list?
That sounds great. That sounds very good.
Sounds good. Good idea, Jim. Thank you.
You know, my pleasure.
Any other comments? We're gonna go to authority boards and commission. We have an ad hoc memo, Katie?
Uh, council, as you are aware, a vacancy on the Code Appeals Board was advertised in August and November with applications accepted through December 22nd of this year. Two applications were received. One applicant, Brian McMurray, responded to an invitation for an interview. Mr. McMurray is the Vice President of the Ancillary Services at Meadville Medical Center. He has extensive experience in construction management, bidding, code compliance, and facilities maintenance. The Code Appeals Board Ad Hoc Committee interviewed Mr. McMurray on December 29th and recommends that Mr. McMurray be appointed to the Code Appeals Board as a full member.
I would so move, Your Honor.
Do I have a second? Was that Larry to second it?
Yes.
Okay, discussion? Questions?
I, I was on the committee and I thought he was very knowledgeable and would be perfect for this.
Okay, thanks Sean. Any other comments? Roll call?
Uh, just that I've worked with, oh, just that I've worked with Mr. McMurray in the past and he's very community-minded. I'm, I'm glad he'll be serving in this way, should he be appointed.
Thanks, Autumn. Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Thank you. We go to the Ad Hoc Interview Committee Council Appointments. Katie? Or someone?
Uh, I, so, there are, the vacancies listed at the top of the sheet that Andy is sharing right now. The Code Appeals Board was taken care of tonight, of course, but the Zoning Hearing Board, Market Authority, and the Meadville Area Water Authority all have vacancies either currently or upcoming. And council has not appointed anybody to serve on those ad hoc interview committees for those vacancies.
So, Your Honor, we need for, we need committee members of council to, for, to meet with interested candidates that are listed here before you for the Water Authority, the Market, and the Market Authority, and the Zoning Hearing Board.
Okay. I have an interest in doing the Water, uh, Water Authority.
I have an interest in the Market Authority.
Depending on the time, I have some commitments, but I would, depending on time, do Zoning Hearing Board.
Okay.
We, do we need, we need two on each one, don't we?
I usually recommend that, just, for not one council member's out there, I usually like to see two.
Okay.
I'll do whichever ones they want me for. I don't, I could do anything. Autumn, it's up to you. Which one do you want?
Uh, Sean, why don't you do Water Authority?
Okay.
And, uh-
Okay, so Sean and I will do Water. We have Larry on Market. Jim, you wanna help with the Market, or Autumn, or?
I'll, I'll, I'd like to take both if that's, unless Jim's feeling, uh, motivated.
That's fine, as long as it's, I cannot meet on any Tuesday.
Just for clarification, which one are you going on, Jim?
Zoning Hearing Board.
The Market.
No, Zoning Hearing.
Alright, I'll do Zoning Hearing and Market. And if I can't make one, then we've got another council member. I'll be okay. And just for a, a point of clarification, I think that note there that we see, Elizabeth Ozerak, she resigned effective end of 2020, is that correct? So, her-
Yeah, end of 20, yeah.
Alright, so I have, I'm just gonna recap the notes, what I heard you just say. So, for the Meadville Water Authority appointment, I have Sean and Leroy. For the Market Authority appointments, we've got Larry and Autumn. And for the Zoning Hearing Board appointments, we've got Jim and Autumn.
Right.
Okay.
Katie, does that cover?
That does, yes.
Alright.
Great. Okay, so under new business, we have discussion, council members, subcommittee appointments.
So, Your Honor, this is Andy. Uh, so in the past, right, you, council has established a number of, I mean, and, and really at the discretion of Mayor and council, various subcommittees. So, before you, you'll see each assignment that you, from last year. So, you'll see the various subcommittees up top here, the redevelopment, we've, you sort of had a liaison, or members of, of council that started as liaison to the redevelopment authority, that Recreation Subcommittee, Parking Beautification Committee liaisons, and then a tax-exempt GIFT Subcommittee, and we did have a Finance Subcommittee appointed as well, and you'll see the various appointments there. These are, these again are, I don't know if they're necessarily standing committees of council, but they're committees you formed in the past and have divided your interests and labor among.
Is everybody willing to stay on the committees they're on?
Yes, I am.
I am.
Yes.
Yep, fine, please.
I am, so, I am, I will, I will offer up that I have not been able to make any of the French Creek Cog meetings this year.
They didn't have any. We had none. Last year.
Thought I got notifications for some, um-
Yeah, and then they canceled them.
Okay.
Leroy, are you meeting-
No problem.
Are we looking for a motion?
As long as everybody accepts where they're at and staying, yes.
I would move if you accept the status quo on the various subcommittee appointments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, before I second, I would like-
Go ahead, Larry.
Yeah, I, I, well, before we discuss, I would like to also be on the Redevelopment Authority.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
You can, you can just go anytime you want to any of these committees. Anyone else wanna go to a French Creek Council meeting, you can go to that, too.
Okay, well, I second Jim's motion.
Well, we need to amend it, to include you on Development Authority. So, I will amend the motion.
Then we need a second on your amended motion, Jim.
Correct.
I second Jim's amended motion.
Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. So, we have to do a resolution on appointing to the French Creek Council of Governments, is that correct?
That is correct, Your Honor.
Okay. So, we already have, we just appointed Autumn and, uh-
And Sean.
And Sean. So, let's, could somebody make a motion for the resolution, appointing Autumn and Sean?
I motion. I second.
Any questions in discussion? Roll call?
Um, Your Honor, the, the resolution also includes city employees to serve on, as alternates and to vote on behalf of the city, as well as the, the two council members.
Who, who were the last years, and are they willing to do it this year?
Uh, Your Honor, that was myself and Jeannie Smith, is that correct, Katie?
That is correct.
Is it alright to keep it the same, Andy?
Uh, yes, that's fine.
Okay, so you got that filled in, Katie?
I do, Your Honor.
Alright, if you could read the resolution, please.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville appointing the French Creek Council of Governments delegate and alternate for 2021. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that council hereby appoints Councilmember Donahue as their delegate to the French Creek Council of Governments and Councilmember Vogel as their alternate delegate for 2021. Said delegate and alternate delegate shall have the authority to vote on behalf of the City of Meadville on issues brought before the cog. Also, per changes in the cog bylaws, council can authorize certain city employees to serve as alternates to vote on behalf of the City of Meadville as follows. City Manager Andy Walker and Public Works Support Coordinator Jeannie Smith.
Motion, please.
A motion we accept.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. See, we have a resolution authorizing submission Office of the State Fire Commission Grant Program. Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner's Fire Rescue and Emergency Medical Service Grant Program. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner has established an annual state grant program that provides funding for career fire companies and emergency medical services, and whereas the city desires to complete and submit an application for the Fire Rescue and EMS Grant Program in the amount of $15,000 to purchase new hand tools and a rapid intervention team pack. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that the appropriate city staff are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner Fire Rescue and EMS Grant Program in the amount of $15,000 and directed to take all action and to execute any and all appropriate documents associated with the grant application.
Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, council, attached in your pack and attached to this resolution is just a grant summary. Again, it's a grant as stated from the, an application of the Office of State Fire Commissioner for the purchase of new hand tools and rapid intervention pack. Hand tools to be used to structure fires, motor vehicle accidents, and rescue scenes. The Rapid Intervention, the RIT pack, RIT Team Pack is a, provide separate air supply for injured or trapped firefighter during a day-day rescue operation, and the request is $15,000, no grant match, no match required.
Andy, what do you think the chances of, of getting this grant would be?
We get this money every year. It's almost formulaic, it's not necessarily, but we've been successful on a regular basis. Grant awards are typical in the $12,500 to $14,500 range. If we don't receive the full balance, there are funds budgeted in the fire department's operational budget to pick up the balance.
But we're not required to spend those, but we have it available, is that correct?
That, that's correct.
Alright, thank you.
Andy, is it possible for you to share the grant summary on the screen?
Uh, well, you'll have to give me a minute.
Or just the agenda, I'm, I'm not picky, it's okay.
Can you see that?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Discussing? Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Uh, we have a resolution recognizing Bill Thompson, or, sorry, Bill Thomas upon his-
Don't we, don't we have another grant? We passed the one?
Yes, there's a second one, Your Honor.
Yes, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. A Resolution D, authorizing submission State Fire Commission for Medical Service Grant. Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner's Fire Rescue and Emergency Medical Service Grant Program. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner has established an annual state grant program that provides funding for career fire companies and emergency medical services, and whereas the city desires to complete and submit an application for the Fire Rescue and EMS Grant Program in the amount of $15,000 to purchase replacement radio batteries, monitors, with batteries and chargers. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that the appropriate city staff are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner Fire Rescue and EMS Grant Program in the amount of $15,000 and directed to take all action and to execute any and all appropriate documents associated with the grant application.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Andy?
Uh, so this is the same program, Your Honor. Um, this is just a sort of two divisions, one for fire company, fire company operations, the other for EMS. In 2019, we changed our certification status from a quick response QRS service to a squad service, which is a different designation, which allowed us then to be eligible for this program. And this is the, the need that the fire department has identified. Same thing, that we're requesting $15,000, no match required. If we get a majority of it funded, there are funds in the operating budget that could cover the remaining balance to complete the project.
Any questions? Comments? Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Alright, let me slide this down on my screen so I don't miss it. We have a resolution recognizing Bill Thomas upon his retirement.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville recognizing Bill Thomas, Executive Director of the Housing Authority of the City of Meadville, upon his retirement. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas Bill Thomas has served as a valued employee of the Housing Authority of the City of Meadville for 25 and a half years, all of which has been as Executive Director. And whereas Mr. Thomas with over 35 years of experience in public housing administration is well-versed in federal housing and urban development regulations, and because of his knowledge and leadership, the Meadville Housing Authority is consistently recognized by HUD with high performer status. And whereas Mr. Thomas is recognized by his staff as the hardest worker, going above and beyond to serve the authority's tenants and participants to the best of his ability, including an occasional trip to the pharmacy or stepping in as an emergency plumber. And whereas Mr. Thomas has performed the duties of his office with dedication, thoughtfulness, and professionalism. And whereas Mr. Thomas elected to retire from his long-tenured employment with the Housing Authority of the City of Meadville effective December 31st, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that Bill Thomas is hereby commended for his many years of dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that the best wishes of the city are hereby extended to Bill Thomas for every success in the future.
So moved.
Motion, please.
So moved.
We just wish Bill a good retirement, enjoy the time, I hope he gets to actually relax. So with that, roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Councilmember statements, Jim, I'll start with you tonight.
Okay, well, uh, tonight is Orthodox Christmas Eve, which means tomorrow is Orthodox Christmas, so Merry Christmas to our observant friends and neighbors.
Okay. Larry?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody that listened, I thank, uh, city council staff for the work they've done, and I'm just hoping that the upcoming year, we all work together to make this a better place, and to remind people, continue to wear your mask, we're not through this, this pandemic yet, let's, let's all wear our mask.
Okay, thanks, Larry. Sean?
Uh, I'd just, just like to say, I'm excited, the opportunities, uh, that council's going to be looking into finding ways to reduce our budget some, or create some new revenue. Uh, I'm disappointed that I'm not going to be going to the Martin Luther King Dinner here in a few weeks, I assume they're going to cancel it. Uh, I'm excited about the Browns playing on Sunday night, I'm not too excited about everybody's sick on the team, so, but that's their own fault, and that's the way it goes, Larry understands that, I know Larry's a Browns fan, and, uh, but I mean, they made it this far, that was first week, wasn't it, Larry?
Yes.
Uh, and...
Long time coming.
Yes, a long time. My, my kids don't know what they ever, they don't remember them ever winning like that. And I, I hardly remember now, so what can I say? I don't know about high school basketball, I don't know what's going on with that at all, I haven't been to a game yet this year, because I don't think I'm going to get to go to one, so we'll see what happens. I'm assuming by spring, they're going to at least have like lacrosse and baseball, I think, who knows? Uh, just surprised at things, how they're moving slowly right now, but I was happy to hear Andy say that, uh, some of our first responders got their first shots, so we'll see how it works out. Uh, just keep wearing your mask and continue, I, like I tell my kids, I said, you know, just be smart all the time, you know, be careful, it's all you can do. It's up to you, you're on, Leroy.
No, we got Autumn, Autumn?
Oh, Autumn, sorry.
Okay, thank you both. Um, yeah, I guess, I'll just say, I'm, I'm glad we made a little bit of headway in, in, um, in kind of setting some priorities that, that council agrees upon and shares, I hope we can continue to do that, um, and, and, and sharpen those and think bigger and be planning for our future, you know, financially, but also, you know, for the well-being of the folks in Meadville. So I look forward to seeing people's lists, uh, next time maybe, and, and hashing those out and continuing to, to work through this. And I guess I, I want to acknowledge, too, that it just, uh, you know, it feels very surreal to be going through all of those kind of businesses, uh, as usual, and deciding what's going on in the ground here when, uh, things are scary and a mess, and our democracy is under attack, it's very terrifying what's going on. I hope that folks stay well and safe and, uh, it's, uh, these are strange times, but uh, that's, that's all I'm going to end on, thank you.
Thanks, Autumn. Kind of go back in history, a couple weeks ago, I'd like to thank the, the fire department and the, uh, union for having Santa Claus, Mrs. Claus, and Santa on the back of the fire truck. A lot of kids in my neighborhood enjoyed that, along with the adults, they wanted to know who the Grinch was, because they thought he played a wonderful part. So we want to thank them for trying to make something a little bit normal in the city, so, um, just appreciate the time and efforts that they put into that. Um, I'm going to thank council for working together, um, getting an agenda together on, on this coming year, not only financially, but where we're going to be sitting a few years from now. We got our work cut out for us, but I'm sure that we're going to be able to do it. And with that, we're going to adjourn into an executive session.
Your Honor? Your Honor?
Yeah.
Uh, before we go, I would also like to thank the, the union, uh, they don't, please, I'd like to thank Paul Pelk for reaching out and asking if I knew of any, and to the other families that they donated to.
Okay, thanks. So we're going to go into executive session, uh, personnel, um...
And real estate.
Someone fill it in. Pardon me?
And real estate, and just receiving information.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? Oh, excuse me, hang on a minute, Mike Crawley on, I didn't see if he's on here, is Mike there?
Hey, I'm here.
Hey, Mike, I hope you had a great Christmas, did you have any questions for us while we're live?
I, I had a question for Andy, but it could probably wait till later if that's a possibility, or I could just send, email him or something.
Okay, whatever, whatever works, but I want to make sure you had the opportunity in case you had any questions.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. Um, motion to adjourn, did we already do that?
No, I motion.
Hold second, hold second.
Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Uh, Andy, do you want us to stay on the computer, or do you, uh...